Hey Bob.
Oh, sorry. How are you?
Doing okay. How about yourself?
Well, I got a bad back, but other than that, I'm doing okay.
Yeah.
Claude wants to pull off tomorrow.
It's not always good for the back.
I think I'll have to beg off. Hey, James.
Hello.
Sounds a little British there. Hello.
Hello. Would you like some tea?
Only with crumpets.
Council, we are streaming too.
Oh, thanks for the warning.
I'm going to behave myself.
For once. Oh, whoops. I mean, as usual, what I meant to say.
Looks like we got a big agenda tonight.
Oh, yeah, huge. I don't know how we're going to get through it.
And it's my focus area.
And guess what? Next week is going to be even tougher.
How come?
We've got a thick book to go through.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Check your calendar, man.
Wow. I was just in the office the other day. I didn't see anything in the box, but I'll take your word for it.
Better check again.
Yeah. Councilmember Baggett, he's pulling your leg. We're canceling the October meeting.
Well, you know, it's funny, but I got the agenda after I got Teresa's message.
He fell for it, too.
He did fall for it. It's really scary, though, Councilmember Jay Raj, how easily you can say that with a straight face.
Well, you should have seen him walk the campaign trail. That was... Talk about a straight face. Boy, I'll tell you. So it's not April 1st, it's October 5th, right?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
So Mayor, I just want to say, what a great meeting on Saturday. I mean, I just really... I think our council is really making progress and our city is.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm very encouraged.
Okay. You guys should get an email from Antoinette tomorrow just to give you a little bit of a... I heard something on NPR today about a Thurston County person running for county council. And she is from Honduras, US citizen, and somebody is wanting to see her birth certificate or naturalization papers.
Hey Bob.
How are you?
Doing okay. How about yourself?
Well, I got a bad bat, but other than that, I'm doing okay.
At.
Off tomorrow.
It's not always good for the back.
I think I'll have to beg off. Hey, James.
Hello.
Sounds a little British there. Hello.
Hello. Would you like some tea?
Only with crumpets.
Council, we are streaming too.
Oh, thanks for the warning.
I'm going to behave myself.
For once. Oh, whoops. I mean, as usual, what I meant to say.
Just like we got a big agenda tonight.
Oh, yeah, huge. I don't know how we're gonna get through it.
And it's my focus area.
And guess what? Next week is going to be even even tougher.
How come?
We've got a thick book to go through.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Check your calendar, man.
Wow. I was just in the office the other day. I didn't see anything in the box, but I'll take your word for it.
Better check again.
Councilmember Baggett, he's pulling your leg. We're canceling the meeting.
Well, you know, it's funny, but I got the I got the agenda after I got Teresa's.
He fell for it, too.
He did fall for it. It's really scary, though, Councilmember J Raj, how easily you can say that with a straight face.
Well, you should have seen him on the campaign trail. That was. Talk about a straight face. Boy, I'll tell you. So it's not April 1st, it's October 5th, right?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
So Mayor, I just want to say, what a great meeting on Saturday. I mean, I just really, I think our council is really making progress and our city is.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm I'm very encouraged.
Okay. Okay, you guys should get a an email from Antoinette tomorrow. Just to give you a little bit of a. I heard something on NPR today about a Thurston County person running for. County Council. And she is from Honduras, US citizen, and somebody is. Wanting to see her blood certificate or naturalization papers. Just because. And but you guys got to read it. It just kind of one of those things. It just makes your blood boil.
Well, I suspect I know the reason you said for some reason, but I suspect I know the reason.
Well, even the the judge said, you know, she is a US citizen and it's like, and this guy just wouldn't let go.
Yeah, we've had some other incidents like that in the past, so. Doesn't surprise me.
So where's the deputy mayor? What's up with him?
I am going to assume he'll be here. He's got six more minutes.
Oh, by the way, Robin's having iPad problem.
Oh.
I sent a ticket to a ticket to the IT department for her.
Okay. If if she would let us know directly, we could get that handled quickly.
Okay, I'll give her a holler.
Well, I think we're aware of it now, but.
Oh, okay, got it.
If when you chat with her, if you could just let her know if she would let us know directly.
Okay.
We can, we can get.
Actually, I it happened earlier. Even I was having problems.
So Microsoft. Three sixty-five, they came out with an announcement that there were multiple issues with their platform today. So.
Okay.
Having issues.
All right. Yeah. And yeah, it was about a half hour ago when she called me and. Bob, what happened to your hair on your head?
We got the three bald guys on top. You notice that?
Oh, really?
It's there. I've got hair there, but you just can't see it because it's so light.
And you do know that this is being livestreamed, right?
Yes.
All right.
What none of you realize is that you all grew taller than your hair.
That's right.
We outgrew our hair, right?
Mine just grows here.
If you get it long enough, you just kind of flip it up.
Hey, that's a good idea.
Well, I'm part Cherokee, so I don't have very much facial hair or. Like the mayor said, we are recording this. And streaming it.
Decorum, my friends, decorum.
Deputy mayor just wouldn't behave himself. What can I say?
That's that's very true. That's what it is exactly. Well, we got a short agenda tonight, that's for sure.
Oh, I've got a huge book.
Are you really?
Yeah.
Where'd you get it from?
You're special, Councilmember J Raj. You are.
I'm always special.
That's right. Exactly.
Recording has started.
Hello, Chris. Welcome.
Chris.
Hi, hi, everyone.
Hello, Chris.
Hola.
Hola.
Hola muchacha.
Hola muchacha. Como esta usted?
Por favor.
Or as we say in Italian, scusa di dice. That just means, what do you say? How you doing?
I I heard that a lot growing up in South New Jersey.
Yeah, of course you did. Exactly. Yes. My brother and I, we talk to each other once in a while and say, hey, how you doing? Now you know, how you doing? Yeah, I'm doing okay. Yeah.
Forget about it.
It's one of those really in-depth conversations, you know.
We just need to get Joe Pesci in it, too.
Yes, we do. Good old Joe Pesci. I've watched a lot of his movies. I watched Reaching Bull. I've watched Casino. I watched The Goodfellas again.
I love the one Cousin Vinny.
My cousin Vinny, exactly.
My cousin Vinny.
Yep.
I I love that one. All classic actors, man.
No, they're they were great. It's all it's perfect. Exactly.
There she is.
Hi, Robin.
Got it working, huh?
Yep, finally.
Okay, Teresa, I have five thirty. So we will call this meeting to order. This is our city council study session for September twenty eighth, twenty twenty. And Teresa, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor De Corsi.
Here.
Deputy Mayor De Corsi.
I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J Raj.
Here.
Member Malinga. Councilmember Malinga.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Excused.
Councilmember Darren.
Here.
Hey, thank you. So once again, per the governor's emergency proclamation twenty dash twenty eight, the city of Auburn is prohibited from holding an in-person meeting at this time. City of Auburn Resolution number five five three three designates the city of Auburn meeting locations for all council. Board and commission meetings is virtual. All meetings will be held virtually and telephonically until King County entered into phase three. The Governor Enslie Safe Start Washington Phase reopening plan. Do we have any agenda modifications for this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you. The only item on our agenda this evening is under our finance, technology, economic development special focus area. And we will turn that portion of the meeting over to Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well, tonight, we're going to further discuss the. Possible implementation of the cost recovery policy. This was. First discussed during March twentieth city council staff meeting and I mean staff presented it. And we're going to go over some of the details tonight, and I believe Director Jeff Tate is going to be the speaker. Take it away, Jeff.
Good evening and thank you. First, just want to do a sound check. Everybody hear me okay? Okay, thanks. And I also just want to point out that this was a collaborative effort, what we're about to talk about and. Well, I'll go through and provide a ten or fifteen minute overview of what the policy is in terms of how we've drafted it and what its approach would be. When we get to Q and A, Ingrid Gao, Public Works Director, as well as myself, will field questions because this touches both. Fees within the world of public works and engineering as well as community development and building. So as has already been noted, the packet is small tonight and we're I'm going to skip past the agenda bill. And not call out a whole lot that I've already written into the agenda bill and really go straight to where the policy starts on page five. And there's three parts that I'm going to talk about and I will come back to these in order, but just to kind of present what they are to begin with. It's the narrative, the written policy, which is pages five and six, and then. An attachment to the narrative, which would be the percentage of recovery rates for different types of permits and plans. Which is pages seven and eight, and then I've included some contextual information on pages nine and ten to show if this policy went into effect. Some examples of how different types of fees might change. So going back to page five and just as a precursor. This was an item that was discussed during council retreat and council expressed interest in hearing more about a cost recovery policy for the a variety of development fees that we charge. Also, as a contextual piece or background piece, back in two thousand eighteen, the city contracted with FCS. A consulting firm which looked at our various different types of development fees for permits and plans. And tried to break it down into a way to understand what is the current recovery? Are we recovering ten percent of our costs for a different for one type of permit and a hundred percent for another type of permit? And that really breaks down into a couple hundred different types of fees that we charge. One of the other highlights, I think, of the March presentation at the retreat is that. Count Council or the city in general is faced with this sort of dilemma. We want to be developer friendly. And we don't want to have barriers, financial barriers for. You know, working in the city. At the same time, wherever we don't achieve a one hundred percent recovery rate. It's important to keep in the back of your mind how that would be subsidized and it's basically subsidized by the general fund. So. The other important piece, I think, to that is that. It really ties back to tax dollars. So things like sales tax and property tax dollars that we collect and go into the general fund. Make up the difference wherever we don't charge a one hundred percent cost recovery. So in the policy itself, the narrative, there's a bunch of background information, but I think what is. Really where I want to hone in on are the numbered items on that policy. And when you're reading through these numbered items, these numbers correspond to what's on the subsequent pages. So where we have suggested that maybe there should be a twenty-five percent recovery or a hundred percent recovery. You'll see numbers next to those percentages and those tie back to these numbers on this page. So. I know it's all there in text, but I'm just going to scan through these really quick that there are a number of considerations that we felt are important when crafting a policy that covers a broad spectrum of fees. You know, one is that it's important to look at compliance rates and if we have cheaper and easier to obtain permits for some types of permits. We get higher compliance and and that's a positive outcome. It's important to consider whether the customer is already paying for other types or in other ways into the city. So if they're paying property taxes or they're paying. You know, business taxes or anything like that, business license fees, you know, is there a way to recognize that in the policy to to provide credit to that customer? Important to consider whether it's a for-profit commercial activity versus something that a property owner simply wants to do to their home, let's say. Appropriate to consider whether the service benefits only the customer who's making the request versus having a broader impact for the community. It's appropriate to consider whether the service is occurring during an early phase of exploratory development activity. So if you make a hundred percent cost recovery on some of the earlier items, that might be a barrier for people to pursue projects that have multiple steps that that may become increasingly expensive along the way. It's important to consider whether the requested service seeking something that's outside our standard procedures and what we mean there is that we have codes that outline how things. Should be done. Sometimes people want to deviate from what those codes are. And while all municipalities offer that as an option to developers. It's important to know that that we lose efficiency when we have to take detours. So when we go into a different area or we go into a code and we have to be, we have to step outside that code and deviate from it or vary from it. That takes us more time to get through that process since they're one-off requests. It's also appropriate to ensure that the fee does not preclude a person's ability to participate in a public process. And that you'll see reflected in if a property owner wants to appeal the decision of a city, we shouldn't make it so expensive that they can't do it. It's also appropriate. To incorporate an annual increase that adjusts for the the cost that we the cost increases that we experience. And of course, councils had those conversations recently. About what our insurance and salary and all those kinds of cost increases occur each year. Since some of the fees are tied to the value of construction, it's appropriate to adjust the value of construction, you know, from year to year. And there's some guidance documents that we rely upon to help us do that so that we're not doing it in an arbitrary way. And then it's appropriate to include the cost of recurring technology and transaction service fees. So we have to maintain systems that make for more. Efficient interaction, you know, online permitting system, for example, the ability to pay with credit cards, all that stuff costs money. So being able to embed those costs, which really are for the convenience of the customer, that there's an appropriate place to do that as well. So I'm going to scan real quick ahead to page seven and. You'll see three different groupings. You'll see the building permits, you'll see land use and environmental, and then you'll see a box with. Engineering, development engineering fees. And I'm not going to go through line by line on on these. I think many of them are self-explanatory. Some might beg questions, but I think what I want to call out here is that obviously there's a column in each of these tables that talks about the service itself. So trying to describe what what sort of permit it is. Then there's a column that shows cost recovery policy, and this is what we would be proposing. That the recovery rate should be for these different categories. And you'll see even in that first box that some of those get complicated and break down in into even finer levels. Like in the mechanical and plumbing permits. And we wanted to include percentages for two thousand seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. To give a little bit of context or background to some actions that prior city councils already took to adjust some fees, not all of them. But there were some that were so far out of line back in two thousand seventeen and eighteen when the study was done. But there were some immediate actions taken for maybe about fifteen or eighteen different types of fees. So I wanted to make sure the council had the background to see that while some of them have stayed relatively stagnant or have dropped a little bit. Some have changed pretty significantly and are already getting closer to that hundred percent recovery or something higher than it was before. So in the world of building permits, I just want to mention that those are things like what they sound like. They are submitting plans to review for a new structure. Or a modification to an existing structure or to add or replace mechanical and plumbing equipment, things of that nature. When you get into the land use and environmental, those are things like shoreline permits, altering critical areas like wetlands and streams. Variances to the code and conditional use permits. So there's a whole broad spectrum of different types of. Permits and and plans subdivisions. Those are land use permits as well. So that's kind of the nature of what's in those category that that particular category. And note that underneath that that second table of land use and environmental and it really is going on to the next page. Wanted to call out some of the specific things that did occur in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen of where some changes in fees were made. That were outside of the normal annual three percent increase. Then you get into page eight and you'll see development engineering. And those are things like our civil plan reviews, like reviewing extensions for water and sewer and storm systems and streets. That are built by private developers, but then when they're done, they hand over that asset to the city to for future management and construction permits. So that's. You know, people or organizations like a Comcast that works within our right of way or Puget Sound Energy. And then some of our right-of-way use permits and then at the bottom deviations and deferrals. And again, those are the kinds of things where people are stepping outside the normal process. And then some of our right-of-way use permits, and, and at the bottom deviations and deferrals. And again, those are the kinds of things where people are stepping outside the normal process to try to obtain an approval that, that doesn't comply with current standards or code. And then, at the end of that, these pages, these couple pages, you'll see an annual adjustment, a couple notes about that, and one is making reference to that building valuation data. So every year, the construction industry puts out what the average per square foot cost is for different types of construction. So warehousing is a different per square foot cost than a house. So the tables are really detailed with lots of different types of, of construction product. So that is the industry standard, is to use those valuation data tables. That's what most municipalities use, and that's what the construction industry uses. So we suggest making sure that every year we're adjusting our valuation tables when, when the information comes out each August. And then also a suggested six-percent inflator each year, which is running concurrently with about the, the cost increases that we experience in the city each year. And then moving to page nine and page ten, and using really the same organization from the prior tables, so building and land use and environmental, and then engineering. There are some examples of what would happen if city council endorsed this policy, felt that it was the right direction to go, and what do the changes look like? And I wanted to pick a few, and I'm just going to focus right now on that first line in the building permit, because sometimes a percent increase looks massive. And you wonder like, what is, I mean, going from eighteen percent to a hundred percent? So I wanted to give some context of what the current fee is and what the proposed fee would be if moving forward with this policy. So you'll see that on commercial, mechanical, and plumbing permits, and that's really for things that are occurring within new buildings, new multifamily or tenant improvements, that we currently charge twenty-eight dollars for a permit. The adjusted fee would jump that up to a hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Now, that's a significant percent increase, but I think it's also important to point out that these projects, generally speaking, are tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, or millions of dollar-type projects. And then note that the next category down is the same type of permit, a residential, mechanical, or plumbing permit, but it's associated with a new house. So a home builder right now pays twenty-eight dollars for a permit. We'd be proposing to go to a thirty-three-percent cost recovery on that, which would bring the permit fee to forty-six. And then we, we go down to the next category, which is over the counter. It's like any one of us who live in a home and you want to replace your furnace or something like that. It would go from twenty-eight dollars to thirty-five dollars. So there are a number of other examples. Obviously, scanning down those tables, we can jump into the land use and environmental, and you'll see some that in some cases are relatively significant. The big box in the middle, a comprehensive plan amendment, currently charged thirty-one hundred dollars for, and that's about a fifty-percent recovery that we, we achieve. And those are when people want to change the text of our comprehensive plan, or they want to change the land use designation from, you know, something that might be five acre or a R-five, which is five units per acre, to say R-seven, seven units per acre. People don't typically downzone their property. They typically make requests to upzone it to increase value. So you know what? You point that, I want to point that out because that's a very labor-intensive process where staff has to shepherd those through. We do environmental review on those projects. We do, we have to coordinate with state agencies. We have to have public hearings with the planning commission. We bring those forward to city council, obviously. So you'll see a collection of those types of of permits and what those increases would be. And I, I guess the last piece that I'll point out on this chart is that we do make a point of distinguishing between residential and commercial. And we do that typically because folks doing residential permits are trying to do something on property they own and reside in. And for commit, commercial permits, like commercial variances or commercial conditional use permits, things of that nature, it's usually more speculative and for trying to increase value of property. So it's more profit-oriented. So we felt that it's more appropriate to have a higher recovery rate on the commercial side and a lower recovery rate on the residential side. So I'm going to pause because I'm at about fifteen minutes. And like I said, Ingrid and I are both happy to answer any questions, start getting feedback. I will say that what we were kind of anxious to, to do in terms of presenting this evening is whatever the outcome is, is that we're able to incorporate that into the next fee schedule update, which is something that would be in, in front of council sometime in the early part of November, in order to make these policies and these recovery rates go into effect, or if there's modifications to the recovery rates as a result of this discussion, but being able to embed those into the next fee update so that they're in effect for two thousand and twenty-one. And I promise this is the last thing I'll say. I know if I'm a council member, I want to know, as always, what does this look like compared to surrounding municipalities? And the interesting thing about that question is there's a lot of municipalities around us who are doing the exact same thing right now. So I was hesitant to provide what our fees would be if this policy went into effect, because it would be applying to fees that are likely to be outdated by a number of municipalities around us in the next year. In fact, so many municipalities are working on cost recovery analysis right now, that the Municipal Research Service Center, MRSC, is collecting data from any city that's willing to participate and talk about this, because there's a lot of cities asking MRSC, hey, do cities out there have cost recovery rates? Or policies that we can look at? So I was reluctant to provide that. I'm happy to do more research and provide that information, but I thought that it'll be, it's likely to be out of date in the coming months. So I didn't want that to be something that ultimately became a misdirect if that by, by making those comparisons. So with that said, happy, happy to field questions.
Councilmember Malinga and Councilmember Brown have questions?
Yes, thank you. Director Tate, I know you said that the rates for the residential didn't go as, up as much a percentage as a commercial, because they're more looking for profits. But with the residential, do we provide discounts for low-income residents?
We have we have a couple things. So first of all, in the fee schedule, there is not a provision specifically that says that if you fall into this category of income, you get a fifty-percent or ten-percent or whatever kind of reduction. There are a couple of things that we do have in place, though. Of course, there's the Housing Home Repair Program, where we participate and actually do the work for people, and we do waive the permit fees for those types of projects. So I think that's an important category to highlight. The second thing is that the city code already does grant the authority to the mayor to make some fee modifications for, it's probably outdated language in terms of how to categorize, but the poor and infirm. So that, that provision exists. And occasionally, that provision is used. Sometimes it's used for nonprofits who are providing services, and sometimes it's used for individual projects. But there's not an across-the-board. And, you know, it's a good question. When you ask that question, I think, how do we determine that as a staff? And one place that we could always lean on are folks that are in our other programs, whether it's utility discounts, or, you know, maybe they've had a home repair in the past, but now they're doing their own work. So there are maybe ways that we could do that. But it does add a layer of trying to confirm what income is and everything like that.
Yeah, I, I understand. But it may be something we should look into. And I know the council has been working really hard on equity training and looking at our policy through equity lens. I think this would be example of how we can apply equity in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Sterns has questions?
Thank you. Yes, I, I just wanted to comment on your overview, where you talk about in the second paragraph that the need for investing in technology to create efficient you know, time and technology applied to the need to process these permits. I really appreciated the training. It appears to be indicating training for city employees as well. So I just, sometimes when we look at costs, we see investment in employees as just simply on the cost side, when we can also look at it from the productivity side to become more efficient. So I just appreciated that.
Councilmember Sterns has a question?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Jeff. That, that was really great. I, I also wanted, I agree with Councilmember Malinga that really, it, it does seem important to take those concerns into, I mean, that's how our cities, you know, we're moving towards operating that way, being more equitable. So I appreciate those remarks. Something along that line, there, there's a, on the sample fee increases document on the first page, I think the fourth item is adult family home inspections. And the current fee is one seventy-five at fifty-one percent recovery, and the adjusted fee will be three fifty, which is a hundred-percent recovery. And I, I guess what I was wondering is, have we ever considered instead of just charging like a flat fee, making the fee based on square footage? So in other words, if I own like a little small cottage, why should I pay the same amount as someone who owns like a giant mansion?
So thanks for that question. So one reason that, that we've avoided square footage fees for that particular category is that adult family homes are limited to six people. So big house or small house? And maybe that would be something to consider is the number of bedrooms or the number of people. But state law states that a adult family home shall be no more than six people. And generally speaking, that is the number that people are applying for. I, there haven't been many where people are applying for four people. So it ties back to that. State law precludes the city from prohibiting adult family homes anywhere, so we have to accommodate them, and we, you know, we accommodate them up to their maximum size, probably ninety-plus percent of the time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from council? So one of the Jeff, back to you.
Okay, one of the things that, just to kind of close that, I mean, we can, and what the next steps would look like is basically taking this policy and moving it forward. And what, the way you would see this next time is in that fee schedule that city council adopts by resolution. So what we can do is we can reconvene as staff and talk about trying to build in a, a provision that addresses Councilmember Malanga's idea. That sounds like it has some support. Give that some thought, see how we would craft that. There's some fees that we could do that for. There's other fees that we would be precluded from doing that for, because we're not allowed to reduce certain type, some types of fees. So, but we can, we can chew on that a little bit, and we do come back to city council with a fee schedule to, to, you know, it's a resolution which we typically bring, can bring forward straight to council. But we can also talk about whether that's something that we present during a study session and talk through a little bit more, so that there's an understanding of what that, what any additional provisions might look like. And thank you for the feedback.
Any other questions from the council?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey has a question?
Thank you. Jeff, just to kind of weigh in on that, I think it would be a good idea to bring it to a study session, so we could kind of take a look at the product before it's finalized. And, and I also agree that Councilmember Malinga's point is a valid point, and I'd like to see the context of that before we take it to resolution.
Any other questions from council? Well, Jeff, next step?
Well, I think as I mentioned, we're looking to bring forward the fee schedule in November. So the next step would be to return with the draft fee schedule that is reflective of the policy, plus any ideas we might have for an additional reduction for income-qualified folks. Or if that's the right way to term that, or if it should be another, maybe a range of options.
Very good. Well, if there are no other questions from council, I think I will turn it back over to our deputy mayor.
Right. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. Any other discussion items this evening, council? Do we have any new business on the agenda to discuss? Okay, hearing done. Thank you all for your participation, and we are adjourned. Be safe, wear your mask. Good night.